Advancing from the Not Too Young to Run Act. We're advocating for a 30% youth quota in government positions. A policy endorsed by the Federal Executive Council. This initiative aims to ensure that young Nigerians have a substantial role in decision-making processes. We're working with the National Assembly to legislate this quota into an Act of Parliament, guaranteeing youth representation and involvement in governance. Secondly, we have also restructured the Nigerian Youth Investment Fund. The Nigerian Youth Investment Fund has been restructured with an allocation of 110 billion naira aimed at providing young entrepreneurs with accessible funding. This initiative seeks to stimulate innovation, create jobs, and to empower young people economically. We're collaborating with the National Assembly to establish a legislative framework for the NUP, ensuring its long-term effectiveness and sustainability. We may wish to recall that the Youth Investment Fund used to be an annual disbursement or annual release of 25 billion for three years. But the administration of President Bolaametunubu gracefully and graciously approved that the fund be restructured and expanded with a yearly disbursement, starting from the 2024 appropriation of 110 billion as opposed to the usual 75 billion. The establishment of the National Youth Development Bank, we're also in the process. He has approved the kickoff of the Youth Development Bank to ensure that young entrepreneurs have access to capital, bridging the gaps that commercial banks traditionally bridging the gaps that young people encounter when they approach commercial banks for facilities. The presidential initiative on youth enterprise clusters, the PAIC Initiative, is designed to support youth-driven enterprises across various sectors by providing essential infrastructure, mentorship, and financial backing. We aim to create a vibrant ecosystem that nurtures youth businesses. This initiative reflects our belief in the entrepreneurial potential of young Nigerians and our commitment to fostering their growth. A major funding mechanism of the presidential initiative for youth enterprise clusters will be the restructured the restructured Youth Investment Fund. While this will ensure that young people are clustered in enterprise clusters across the priority sectors of the economy, whilst ensuring that it will leverage on economics of scale and judiciously utilize resources. Renovation of the Youth Development Centers. The Ministry of Youth Development is actively renovating Youth Development Centers nationwide. These centers will offer safe spaces for learning, skill acquisition, and recreation, serving as a hub for comprehensive youth engagement. This initiative is part of our broader strategy to ensure that young Nigerians have access to quality resources and opportunities. I stand here to also seek and advocate to the National Assembly to continue to support the Federal Ministry of Youth Development and also to support the passage of youth-sensitive, youth-responsive budgets come year 2025. If we compare the Appropriation Act of 2024, we will find that the budget was not very youth-responsive, but there's a reason for that. The ministers didn't come on time, so we couldn't we weren't able to engage with the stakeholders early enough to ensure that the budget was more youth-responsive than it is now. But we have been assured by the leadership of the National Assembly that the 2025 appropriation will be more youth-responsive, and I count on the support of this Honorable House to facilitate the passage of a youth-responsive 2025 Appropriation Act. The National Youth Skills Program. The National Youth Service Corps is undergoing significant reforms to enhance economic empowerment and self-sustainability of the scheme. We're collaborating with state governments on various projects, such as agroforestry in Niger, Eboine States, and the cotton value chain development in Kasina State. These initiatives aim to equip our young people with practical skills and economic opportunities, furthering their contributions to national development, and we're working with the National Assembly on these reforms. Imagine a Nigeria where the cotton value chain was well-developed, then we wouldn't be spending billions of dollars importing fabric annually. But we know that young people have the power and the potential to drive this process, so we would be channeling the energies and the innovation of young persons across the cotton value chain to lead to economic transformation. National Youth Skills Program. In celebration, in commemoration of the International Youth Day in August, we will be launching the National Youth Skills Program in Allorin Quares State. This program is designed to equip young Nigerians with critical skills needed in today's dynamic job market, enhancing their employability and entrepreneurial potential. The National Council on Youth. Later this year, we will inaugurate the National Council of Youth. This council will include state commissioners of youth development and other stakeholders, providing a platform for coordinated action and policy implementation in youth affairs and development. In conclusion, the partnership between the Ministry of Youth Development and the National Assembly is crucial for the success of these initiatives. President Bolaametunubu GCFR and myself, as Minister of State and my brother, Honorable Ayadele Olawande, count on your continued support to enact the necessary legislation and oversee the implementation of these programs, ensuring they deliver meaningful impact. Our youth are the architects of our future. Let us work together to create a nation where they can thrive and contribute to the progress of our society, and together, we will have a banner without staying to hand on to our children. Thank you very much, and may God bless the Federal Republic of Nigeria.
I'm going to call for yet another resounding applause for the Honorable Minister. Thank you so much, and thank you for the laudable programs that you're bringing about for the youth of Nigeria. There's a last but found ID of your comrade Jeff Okoye, Director General Nigerian Youth for Democracy. For one time, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good morning. The Speaker, House of Representatives, Right Honourable Abbas Tadjidin, the convener of this town hall meeting. The Deputy Speaker, Right Honourable Benjamin Kalu, obviously not Samson Ituno, is absent from this town hall meeting as he's attending a mission outside the country. I bring you one greeting from Yaga, Africa. My name is Yetunde Bakary. I work as the program manager at the Yaga Africa Center for Legislative Engagement, and it's our pleasure as an organization to be part of this town hall meeting today. This gathering is a testament to the vibrant spirit of democracy and the importance of dialogue between the governments and citizens. It also affirms Mr. Speaker's and the 10th House's commitment to participatory democracy, reinforcing the identity of the 10th House as the People's House. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for convening this town hall meeting. Mr. Speaker, citizens, especially young people, are loudly voicing their concerns. They are hungry, they feel insecure, and they face multiple levels of injustice. They want the People's House to take urgent legislative actions to reduce the cost of living, lower food prices, cut the cost of governance, increase budget allocations to education and health, and implement justice-based recommendations to conclude electoral reforms by December 2024. These demands are not too much to ask. We cannot deny the current economic hardship faced by Nigerians, and as duty bearers, we urge the government to listen, take action, and communicate effectively. More importantly, we urge the government to uphold and defend citizens' rights to peaceful assembly, as enshrined in the 1999 Constitution as amended. Engagement is a two-way street, requiring a government that listens, understands, and acts on the needs and aspirations of its people, and equally requiring informed, active, and patriotic citizens. When these elements come together, the outcome is an inclusive and accountable governance system that truly serves the people. To our young people, you are the heartbeat of our nation. Your active participation and engagement with democratic processes are crucial for sustaining a democratic system that delivers for we, the people. Good governance strives on transparency, accountability, and mutual respect, which is achieved through constant constructive dialogue. As we move forward, let us remember that the strength of our democracy lies in active citizenship. We urge our young people to engage with elected representatives, attend public hearings, participate in town hall meetings such as this, and utilize social media platforms to voice concerns and hold governments to account. As a civil society organization dedicated to promoting citizens' participation in democracy, we recognize the pivotal role that constant engagement plays in improving governance and accountability. We work closely with the National Assembly to support opportunities and platforms for citizens' engagement with elected representatives, and this is made possible by the European Union, under the European Union Support to Democratic Governance in Nigeria project. As a young person myself, I hope all the young people in attendance will be allowed to speak freely, and that the resolutions from this town hall meeting will address the challenges prompting the end-bad governance protests and improve the social conditions of Nigerians. Together, let us continue to foster a culture of engagement, of respect, and mutual understanding. Through this effort, we will build a brighter, more inclusive future for all of us. Once again, Mr. Speaker, thank you for convening this crucial town hall meeting, and we look forward to continuing our work in implementing the legislative agenda of the People's House. I wish us all a successful deliberation. Thank you.
The Executive Director, Yaga Africa, Samson Ituno, speaking through Yetunde Bakary of Yaga. Please a round of applause for her one more time. Let me at this point recognize the presence of Pedro Chibos, or Obi, Nigerian Association of, National Association of Nigerian Students President. They just brought that to me. Okay, no more recognitions. We'll keep all that aside. Thank you, thank you. No more recognitions. We recognize you. Thank you very much. Dyo Israel, APC National Youth Leader. We welcome you. Having taken those recognitions, please, the recognition is withdrawn forthwith. Thank you. May I at this juncture, Your Excellency, invite to the podium for... Can we have some quiet, please? Can we have some quiet, please? We will correct it at the right time, just to worry. Thank you. May I at this point, Your Excellency, the convener of this program, invite Ms. Maraja Peran, the resident representative, Conrad Adenauer Stiftung, one of our collaborators here this morning, to please come forward with our goodwill message. Maraja Peran. And I also like to please speak to us about timing. Please keep protocols as much as you can and go straight to delivering your goodwill. Thank you very much.
Right Honourable Speaker, House of Representatives, Right Honourable Abbas Tadjidin, PhD, the Right Honourable Deputy Speaker, the House of Representatives, Right Honourable Benjamin Kalu, all dignitaries present, I will follow the instructions and stand on existing protocol. On behalf of the Conrad Adenauer Stiftung, a German political foundation, I want to thank the Right Honourable Speaker for this initiative and for the dedication really to hold this town hall meeting today with youth groups and organizations, and I want to thank you specifically for partnering once more with the Conrad Adenauer Stiftung in holding this event. We commend this necessary and important initiative by Mr. Speaker, and it does not come only at the right time, but it also stems from the right sentiment, which is understanding the plight of the Nigerian youth and wanting to speak to them, to understand them, and to get in touch with them. As many of you know, the Conrad Adenauer Stiftung, which in short we call CAS or Konrad, has been active in Nigeria for almost 25 years now. We have not been shying away to support any democratic forces, and our focus of our work here lies on supporting good governance, the rule of law, human rights, and to support the sustainable development of this beautiful nation. Now, today, we gather to address an issue of utmost importance, an issue that affects the very future of this beautiful nation, the needs of the Nigerian youth. The youth are the backbone of every society. We know that. They are the leaders of tomorrow, but more importantly, they are the cataclysm of change today. They are vibrant, they are energetic, which we just saw. They are full of potential. However, there are numerous challenges that hinder their progress and stifle their voices. The high rate of unemployment, the lack of quality education, and limited access to basic amenity like healthcare and housing are some of the pressing issues that the Nigerian youth revel with daily. These challenges have led to a sense of frustration and disillusionment among them, culminating in the planned upcoming nationwide protests. These protests are not just expressions of discontent, but they are a call for action, a plea for change. They are a manifestation of the collective aspirations of the youth, their desire for a better Nigeria. As members of the National Assembly, it is your duty to listen to every Nigerian, to understand and to act upon it. As representatives of the whole of Nigeria, you must acknowledge the legitimate concerns of the youth and work tirelessly to address them. This has been very well understood by the leadership of the 10th House of Assembly. But what needs to happen? Firstly, there is a pressing need to invest in education, equipping the youth with the skills and knowledge that they need to thrive in the 21st century. There must be also an enabling environment for business to flourish, thereby generating employment opportunities. Secondly, it needs to be ensured that the youth have access to quality healthcare and affordable housing. These are not just basic needs, but they are fundamental rights that every Nigerian deserves. Lastly, you should involve the youth in the decision-making process. Their voices need to be heard, their ideas need to be considered, and their potential need to be harnessed. Before I close, I want to stress what I always tell German and European politicians and officials, which is that Nigeria has everything to be truly a great nation, the greatest among the more. Yes, I think this deserves some applause. I always emphasize this because it is true. And the natural resources, the human resources, let's make that potential a reality. For a strong Nigeria, not only to be the strongest on the continent, but to be amongst those leading states worldwide in the future. Acknowledged this, I once more want to commend the Right Honourable Speaker and the whole leadership of the 10th Assembly for the right sentiments at the right time and for bringing the House of Representatives together with the youth today, giving them a platform to phrase their concerns and also trying to understand, make them understand better how the legislative process works. Very important because both groups, both sides need to understand each other better. But please let it not stop here. Let's continue the talk, and most importantly, let's walk the talk for the future of this grand nation, and I can guarantee you with the continuous support of the Conrad Adenauer Stiftung. In conclusion, the need of the Nigerian youth are not just their needs, but the needs of every nation really. By addressing these needs, we are not just empowering the Nigerian youth, but strengthening the very fabric of Nigerian society. Let us remember that the strength of a nation lies in its youth. Let us invest in them, let us believe in them, and most importantly, let us act for them. Thank you very much, and let's have a very productive day.
Thank you very much, Maraja Peran. We'll move on to inviting Ms. Elsie Atafua, resident representative, United Nations Development Program Nigeria. Elsie Atafua. Is she here with us? If she's not... Okay, there's a representative making his way. Please, a fellow face blocked. Can we pave way for him quickly as he makes his way here? We'd appreciate it if you take the microphone, rest on the already established protocol, and just tell us your name standing in for Ms. Elsie Atafua. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker of the People's House, the Honorable Minister present, especially our own, the Minister of Health. Distinguished honourable members, ladies and gentlemen, it is with a great pleasure and the spirit of brotherhood that I delivered this morning on behalf of the resident representative of UNDP Nigeria, Ms. Elsie Atafua, who is unwedably absent. This town hall meeting comes at a crucial time for our nation as we stand at the intersection of challenges and opportunities. It is our fervent belief that this town hall meeting will bridge the gap between our nation's leadership and its vibrant youth. As we gather in this chamber for these historic events today, let us first acknowledge the significance of this moment. It is the work of, in the word of the great Nancy Mandela, there can be no revelation, there can be no canary revelation of society's soul than the way in which it treats its children. Today, by creating this platform for dialogue and engagement, the 10th House of Representatives, the People's House, is rebuilding the soul of this nation, committed to its future, a future embodied by the energetic, innovative, and passionate youth of Nigeria. Nigerian youth, comprising over 60% of our population, represent not just our future, but our present. The youth voices, ideas, energy are the lifeblood of our democracy and the driving force behind our national development. As we face unprecedented global challenges, from the climate change to violent crisis, economic uncertainties to famine and hunger, the importance of youth engagement in governance and resilience in our society is immense. Youth fresh perspective and innovative solutions are vital in navigating these complex issues and shaping policies that will define our nation's trajectory. Mr. Speaker, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, UNDP commits, commend Mr. Speaker for this initiative, which aligns perfectly with its global mission of promoting inclusive and sustainable development, and with our new hope, with a new strategic offer in Africa. By bringing together these diverse youth voices, from students and young professionals to entrepreneurs and persons with disabilities, you are embodying the true spirit of participatory democracy. As the reputable literary icon, Shuna Ashewie, once said, Nigeria is what it is because its leaders are not what they should be. Today, we have the opportunity to redefine this narrative, to show that Nigerian leaders, both current and futures, are ready to listen, learn, and lead with integrity, maturity, and discipline. As we engage in this dialogue today, let us remember that the outcome of this event will shape policies that will re-put through the fabric of our society, impacting lives and livelihood across the nation. It is crucial therefore that these policies are informed by the diverse perspectives and experiences of these young Nigerians. Our collective future depends on bridging the gap between policymaking and the aspiration of young Nigerians. To the youth representative present here today, let me remind you that your presence is means with heavy, with huge responsibilities. You carry with you the hopes, the dreams, and the aspiration of millions of young Nigerians. Your voices matter, your ideas have values, and your participation is essential for the progress of our great nation. As Wallace Soinka eloquently put it, "The greatest threat to freedom is advance of criticism." I urge you to speak boldly, to challenge assumptions and to offer constructive criticism and innovative solution to the challenges facing Nigeria. To Mr. Speaker, leadership and the honourable members of the People's House, I urge you to listen, truly listening to the voices, yarns, and aspirations of these youths. Their perspectives may challenge your assumptions, but they also offer fresh insights and innovative approaches to governance. As leaders, your role is not just to make decisions, but to empower and enable the next generation of leaders. In the word of the list sage, Chief Obafemi Awolowo, said, "The greatest legacy we can leave for our children is to help them develop the resources they need to succeed in life." Mr. Speaker, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, UNDP remains committed to supporting Nigeria's journey towards sustainable development and inclusive governance. We believe in the power of the youth to drive positive change, and we always stand ready to partner with the government and youth organizations to create opportunity for their meaningful participation in governance. Mr. Speakers, I crave your indulgence to highlight some of the key initiatives that UNDP is undertaking to empower Nigerian youth. This includes Global Environmental Facilities Small Grants Program, which is supporting young entrepreneurs to develop eco-friendly businesses and sustainable community projects. We also have our Accelerator Lab, which is fostering innovation and creative problem-solving among youth to address sustainable development goals and local development challenges with cutting-edge solutions. Mr. Speaker, furthermore, we have our Jubilee Fellow Program, which is serving youth to acquire employable skill, work experiences, and entrepreneurship expertise that we assist them to either be gainfully employed or be employers of labor. Recently, we launched Innovation Center, a hall for creative development solutions that provides space for youth, for young minds to collaborate, innovate, and create impactful projects. The Timbuktu Filter Club, which was also launched about two weeks ago, we helped we help the young, we help driving youth innovation and socioeconomic development across Africa. In the Palace Gym, we have about forty-two startups from thirty-one countries across Africa that were adopted during the launch of that Timbuktu Filter Club. We also have Young Africa Innovate, which is creating spaces for young, for youth to research and nurture innovative solutions to create social, to critical social challenges by keeping them with tools and guidance to bring their vision to fruition. We also have Ha-Afta, that is Ha for the women. Afta means Africa Continental Free Trade Area Initiative, which UNDP is supporting with a seed fund of one million dollars to promote women empowerment, especially young women, to tap into the opportunities available within the African Continental Free Trade Area. Finally, Mr Speaker, this initiative reflects UNDP commitment to nurturing the potential of Nigerian youth and creating an enabling environment for their growth and contribution to the achievement of SDG and national development. Mr Speaker and honourable members, on behalf of Madame Elsie Atafa, I also wish to highlight that the speaker has saddled UNDP with responsibility to partner with him to implement the parliamentary development programme, which we are working assiduously to accelerate its implementation. I'm sure that, Mr Speaker, you have been on the neck of your officers. We are on it, and it's going to mature very, very shortly. In conclusion, I am reminded by the word of Dr Namidi Assequi, our former president, that there is plenty of room in the top because very few people care to travel beyond the African route. And so, most of us seem satisfied to remain within the confines of mediocrity. Today, in this historical event, we have the opportunity to go beyond the African route, to aspire to excellence in governance, and to set a new standard for youth engagement in Nigeria political process. Mr Speaker, we thank you and the leadership of the People's House for this opportunity to engage with the youth of this great country, Nigeria. Thank you all for your attention.
That was almost more like an episode. So ladies and gentlemen, can we please give UNDP another round of applause? Thank you very much. The very next goodwill will be coming from the Director General, Nigeria Country Department African Development Bank, Mr Lamine Barrow. Mr Lamine Barrow, you here? If he's not, we'll move on. Okay, someone is coming instead, from the look of things. Please, there's so much noise coming from the rear. Can we please keep our conversations in sedative tones, please? Thank you very much for your kind attention. Please do us the honor of mentioning your name. Thank you for the records.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everybody. The convener of this programme, Right Honourable Abbas Taghoudin, PhD. The Honourable Speaker of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, House of Assembly, House of Representatives. I want to stand on the existing protocol. My DJ is unavoidably absent and sent his apologies. He is actually engaged in other prior activities. I am Greg Osibo. Let me start by first congratulating the Office of the Honourable Speaker, House of Representatives, for convening this very important meeting in collaboration with Yaga Africa and Comrade Adunio Staffing. It is indeed a delight to be here, to be part of this town hall meeting. And while we acknowledge the challenges facing the youth in Africa and the world in general, the youth in Nigeria, Africa, and the world in general, I want to also underscore the fact that there are great opportunities open to the youth, open to the government, and to the groups. For example, taking the advantage of the democratic dividend, as well as the huge human and material resources that are in the country. It is our hope that this forum will offer the opportunity for constructive and productive engagement between the youth and the National Assembly for legislative and policy action points for enhanced youth development. Respectively, I salute the President and the Commander-in-Chief of the Federal Republic of Nigeria and the governments at various levels for efforts through the renewed, or through the Renewed Hope Agenda and other initiatives that are directed at improving the development and webbing of the Timmy Youth Population of Nigeria. Permit me, at this point, to highlight a few of African Development Bank's efforts in contributing to youth development and job creation in the country. These have been through several interventions that focus on empowering and investing in youth with primary focus on enhancing access to finance, employment, entrepreneurship, and skills development. Examples of these interventions include, one, the inclusive basic services delivery and livelihood empowerment integrated programme, which is being implemented in five North East states, including Bauchi, Adama, Borno, Gombe, and Teraba. This two-hundred-and-fifty-million project is actually focusing on reconstruction and economic integration with interventions on water and sanitation, health, education, nutrition, and livelihoods. The programme has provided income opportunities for about two-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-three vulnerable and displaced persons through the provision of assets, skills, business monitoring in agri, mentoring in agri livelihoods. It has also been able to scale about one-thousand-two-hundred-and-twelve youths from poorest households having received skills and entrepreneurial training and mentorship to enhance standards and productivity in the agri business. This programme is restructuring the Borno Car Two Market and Adama Mobile Car Two Market, and is expected to open avenues for income generation activities, trade, and job creation for youths and women. The second intervention that we also have is called Ekiti Zone, Knowledge Zone, which is about eight-hundred-million project approved last year. It focuses on fostering innovation, technology, knowledge-based industries in Ekiti and around. The project is also benefiting from Ekiti State contribution and other contributions also. It has a particular focus on youth empowerment, skills development, and job creation. And we focus, and we support development of specialized innovative hubs, focus on agri innovation to develop agricultural value chains, and we foster collaboration with universities, technologies, and research institutes to promote research and commercialization, which among others target the agri. This project also focuses on tech sector and is expected to generate twenty-six thousand jobs and inject about forty million USD annually into the national income. The federal government's two-hundred-and-six-hundred-and-eighty-million investment in digital and creative industries is another project. By providing access to finance, training, infrastructure, and market opportunities, AIDAS aims to create vibrant ecosystem where young entrepreneurs can thrive. Its focus includes agri-tech, recognizing its potential to revolutionize agri and create opportunities for youth. The bank is pleased to partner with AFD, which is Angeles France Development, who is also contributing about one-hundred-million euro into this project, and also with the Starmi Development Bank, who is also partnered with us in this project. AIDAS is expected to create six-point-one-million jobs, most of which will benefit the youth. The African Development Bank is expected to mobilize additional funding in order to bring about two-hundred-and-sixteen or to support two-two-six technology startups and creative industries. The project also hopes that four-hundred-and-fifty-one digital technology and creative startups and MSLPs will receive non-financial support. In conclusion, because of time, Mr Honourable Speaker and members of the House and everybody present here, we would like to reaffirm the commitment of the bank to partner and to keep supporting the government and other stakeholders in the areas of youth and women development, job creation, for the overall inclusive economic growth. I wish this meeting very fruitful deliberations and outcomes. Thank you, and God bless you all.
Please, just as we appreciate your goodwill, we'd like to plead again for your kind understanding that we are giving only three minutes to every other speaker except for the ministers whose own is a presentation. Please, can we have some quiet in the hall, please? I thank you very much for your kind understanding. And an appeal to all the youth groups, this is just the opening ceremony of this engagement. I'd like to assure you, all the youth groups and your leaders, that the moment we hit the point where we'll be discussing interactively, you will all be given an opportunity to speak and to contribute your thoughts to this very engagement. So please kindly stay with us a while and bear with us just for your kind understanding. And moving on at this point, Your Excellencies, we'd like to then invite the All Progressives Congress Youth Leader, Adetayo Israel, the National Youth Leader of the All Progressives Congress, to please come forward with your goodwill message. Adetayo Israel, please, can we have a round of applause for him?
Your Excellency, Speaker of the House of Representatives, Your Excellency, Principal Officers of the House of Representatives, Honourable Ministers, Members of the Federal Executive Council, how the protocol duly extended. Your Excellency, this event could not have come at a better time than now. It's important that we're gathered here today for this Citizens Assembly. Just two days ago, we're in the Presidential Villa at the inauguration of the Citizens Assembly for North Central, and to be here at the House of Representatives, at the People's Assembly, to discuss and have a dialogue with the future of our nation, I want to commend the Speaker for putting this together. But I am here, Mr Speaker, representing the interest of over seventy-million young Nigerians, many of whom in our party and those who are not in our political party. I had the privilege of being in Virginia as part of the IVLP programme, and there's a place they call the Presidential Precinct. It's called the Power of People, the Power of Place, and the Power of Ideas. The Power of People, you have here the future of our great nation. The bright, energetic young Nigerians who are going to take over the mantle of leadership, or, excuse me, who are already taking over the mantle of leadership. The Power of Place, we're gathered at one of the most powerful institutions building in our whole country, the House of Representatives, not just the National Assembly, where our voice are meant to be heard and promoted. We're here, the power of ideas to discuss on how to ensure that our young people feel proud to be Nigerian again. As a party of the President, the party of the Vice President, the party of the Senate President, the party of Mr Speaker in your zou zou, we are very passionate about the interest, the future of the young people of our nation. And so, we're here, standing shoulder to shoulder, not just with the government and the administration, but shoulder to shoulder with the young people of our nation, irrespective of our party and our leaning. And so, Mr Speaker, you allow me to take two sides today. I represent a generation that is resting, a generation that is impatient, a generation that is energetic, a generation that is tired, a generation that wants to see a country, a unity, a country filled with unity, a nation where peace and justice shall reign. A generation, a generation that wants to stop japping but want to stay back home to help to build a Nigeria that works for home. But my generation is angry because this meeting should not be coming now. It should have been happening since the inauguration of this assembly. Your Excellency, my generation feel taken for granted because this looks like a reactionary rather than a borrow-me-the-word. Huh? Say it. Proactive. Mr Speaker, our youth don't want to japa and leave this country. We want to stay back home because there's nowhere like home. We don't want to go and wash toilet in London. We don't want to go and drive buses in America. If we want to go abroad, we want to go like the Minister of Health to lead a global organization in the West. But for that to happen, there are few things that we want to see. A friend of mine in America just bought a brand-new twenty-two-five Range Rover without paying a dime because there's mortgage in that community. And that's why I'm excited that our President has introduced the credit card programme to be able to give young people who may not have the cash in their hand to be able to access credit. Our young people want to be able to have houses at the age of twenty-four, twenty-five, to own their own homes. They don't want to live in their current house and get married at thirty, when they are met in Europe, but getting married at eighteen, twenty, twenty-four. But that's why I'm happy that the Federal Ministry of Housing is launching the Renewed Home Housing Programme and making it available for every Nigerian to be able to access these opportunities. Your Excellency, our young people, the most important for us is that we want livelihood, we want access to money. We want money to run our businesses. We don't have collateral, we don't have a house, a car, a building to be able to get money for our businesses. And that's why I'm happy, the Minister of State is here about what Smeedan is doing, helping to put money in the hands of the SMEs. And that's why I'm also happy, the Honourable Minister of Youth and our brother is here, helping to now launch the Nigerian Youth Investment Fund that will put money into the hand of young entrepreneurs so that they can run their own business. But ladies and gentlemen, Honourable Minister of Youth, this should have happened before now. Our government must, please, do its best to make the work of the President come out and be proactive rather than reactionary. Am I speaking your mind, young people? But let me assure you, let me assure you, my brothers and my friends, that as much as we are angry, we want a Nigeria that works. We want a country where we feel we can call home, where we comfortably, as young people, do not get harassed by police because we have red locks, where we don't have to struggle, but be assured that the man at the wheel, His Excellency Ashwadubala Ahmed Tinombo, the President and Commander-in-Chief, is here because of you. He's here to make Nigeria work. He's here to build infrastructure, like the Lagos Calabar Railway, to ensure that those who are on the, in their various farms, in Benue, in different communities, can get their goods and services into cities like Lagos, Kano, the Abuja Rail, the Metro Rails, and the infrastructure that have been built to ensure that we can build a connectable Nigeria. I want to assure you that please let us give all our support to His Excellency the President. Things may not be as we want it to be, but one thing that I know and I can stand before is that the President means well for Nigeria. And we will see changes under his administration in the areas of education. We can see what is happening with the student loan programme. Many young people are accessing it, over eighteen young, over eighteen state universities have been embodied as a Many young people are accessing it, over eighteen, over eighteen state universities have been onboarded as of yesterday. We have a right to be angry. We don't want to jappa out of Nigeria, we want a country called home. But please, as we show our anger, let us know that we have a nation to build and the man at the wheel, Ashwadubola Ahmed Tinubu, will do everything he can, blood, sweat and tears, to build a Nigeria that works. Thank you and God bless you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Adetayo Israel, the National Youth Leader of the All Progressives Congress. I recognize your presence, Mrs. Abio Nweshi, S S A to the President on Community Engagement North Central. Thank you for joining us. Moving on very quickly with the goodwill messages, the honors is now on the Global Prof. The Honorable Minister and Coordinating Minister of Health and Social Welfare, Federal Republic of Nigeria, please do join me in welcoming Professor Ali Pate with a round of applause. In the same vein, would like that we, communism is of time because time is of essence. Thank you very much, Prof.
Thank you. The Right Honorable Speaker of the House of Representatives, Tadjidin Abbas, C O N B H D, the Principal Officers of the House of Representatives that are here, my colleagues, the honorable ministers, members of the House of Representatives, the distinguished Nigerian youth, and I recognize the A P C Youth Leader who raised the bar. And I was a bit nervous to speak after him, but good morning to you all. First of all, let me thank the Right Honorable Speaker and the Leadership of the House of Representatives for convening this conversation at this People's House to discuss issues that are very pertinent, very important, given the mood of the nation. And I think this manifests the reality that we have. To build this country, it is all of us together. The federal government under President Bola Ahmed Tinubu, as well as the National Assembly and all of us, civil society development partners, have to join hands to make what Nigeria ought to be. I have a lesson that I would like to share with the youth and it's important lesson that may not be very evident. Thirty years ago, I was a youth and I japped from this country. A year ago, President Bola Ahmed Tinubu gave me the humbling honor of inviting me to join his team and I came back to join. Before I came back, I had traveled to more than ninety countries. I have involved myself in supporting more than a hundred countries as Global Director of the World Bank, as C E O of the Global Alliance for Vaccines, as a professor at Harvard University, Global Health and Population Department. I learnt one lesson and that lesson is that wherever you are in the world, you will see countries that are better than you. And you'll see many countries that are also far better than where you are. And what you do is you begin to appreciate where you are, where we are as Nigeria. And at the end of the day, nobody will build this country than us Nigerians across party lines, across states, local government, all of us have to join hands. When President invited us to join his team, it is very clear, he has a vision of prosperity for this country. A vision that has our economic growth faster than our population growth rate. If we don't grow our economy faster than our population growth rate, we will be poorer. And for the last twenty-four years, I think we've struggled. But now we have a president who has a vision which is articulated and he has people at the center of that vision, human capital. It's about the youth, it's about the youth of today, it's also about the youth of tomorrow. Because the youth unborn in twenty years will be on the streets. That's why the human capital agenda is so important to this administration. He's done a lot to help us turn the corner in terms of the macro fiscal situation, which we got in twenty twenty-three, similar to what we had in nineteen eighty-three, which led to the truncheon of our democratic evolution at that time. Stabilizing that macro fiscal space, fundamental political reforms, the local government autonomy, really very tangible steps, building back Nigeria piece by piece by piece. What we have waited for twenty-four years, at least we can wait for twenty-four months more to see the results. Even before then, they are very tangible steps. He signed the Minimum Wage Act and I thank the National Assembly for passing that. And there's so many elements that I can say. For us in health and because of the centrality of human capital, health, education, youth and the employability of youth, my sister has laid out what this administration has been doing. Minister of Trade will lay out, agriculture will tell you what they are doing. All facets of President Tinubu's government are kicking in high gear to deliver for this country, to do that with our state governors, with local governments, with the legislature collectively as Nigerians. For us in health, we focus on the poorest and most vulnerable, our mothers. Everyone here has a mother, let them survive. That's why we're expanding primary healthcare, more than eight thousand eight hundred of them reached. More than two million Nigerians in the last one year access healthcare through the Volavro Group's fund, in addition to the others who are insured. We're investing in upgrading cancer infrastructure across the country, six geopolitical zones. Will soon be groundbreaking of ten major hospital infrastructure. Just this week, he approved graciously, Mister President, seven thousand eight hundred eighty-seven dialysis sets for those who are suffering from kidney disease. I can go on and on, on the healthcare value chain, we spent a year building block by block under the President's initiative to unlock the healthcare value chain, so that more than five hundred thousand Nigerian youth can be employed in the healthcare value chain, in manufacturing, in logistics and supply chain management, in services. We said we will train a hundred and twenty thousand frontline health workers. As we speak, more than ten thousand frontline health workers have been retrained in eight states and additional eight states are coming. In addition to a social investment program that has been sanitized, instead of being run in a way that was leaving a gap in terms of the trust of the people to improve on it, to revamp it. So I would like to conclude by saying thank you, Mister Speaker, but to all of us as Nigerians, that there are no angels from anywhere, I've seen it. I've been to more than a hundred countries that will come and fix this country for us. It's all of us working together and those who forget history are bound to repeat it. We have had histories in this country, we should not make the mistake of repeating that. And we have a steady hand, an experienced hand, Mister President, working with the leadership of National Assembly. We should just be serious that we want to build a country that will be prosperous, that will be a pride of this continent and a pride in the world. Thank you, Mister Speaker, for inviting us. Thank you.
Thank you. You see why I call him the Global Prof? Thank you very much for your kind words and goodwill. But let me also quickly mention that yes, just as Dayo came here and gave his goodwill, he did say yes, that the youth are angry, that's very true. But please, in expressing your anger, keep your emotions in check because no country can develop in a amiss rank or any form of violence. Please astute violence even as you are angry, the Lord will see us through and President Tinubu is at the verge of rewriting the wrongs. And moving on, Your Excellency, the Right Honorable Speaker, we then want to invite very quickly the Honorable Minister of Industry, Trade and Investment. Would like to welcome to the podium, Dr. Doris Anita. Please can we welcome her with a resounding applause as she makes her way here? So do us the honor of having to stand or rather rest on the established protocol after the Speaker and the Deputy. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, everyone. Greatest Nigerian youth. Indefatigable Nigerian youth. Progressive Nigerian youth. Great. Right Honorable Speaker, Dr. Tadjidin Abbas, Right Honorable Benjamin Kalut, the Deputy Speaker of the House, Leadership and Members of National Assembly here present. Distinguished youths, are you there? Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, gentlemen of the press, permit me to sit on existing protocol as already established. Thank you very much, Mister Speaker, for having us here and giving us the opportunity to speak to the Nigerian youth and to the Nigerian people about the achievements as well as the goals and objectives of this administration. I would also like to write on what other speakers have said so far. Well, let me give you a little background of why we're here and what we're trying to achieve. Because it's very important that we take this podium or every time we hold a mic to speak, we use the opportunity to educate and also to inform. When the President, current President, President Bola Ahmed Tinubu took office, there was only one promise he made us. He told us that he was going to lead and he was going to establish an economy of one trillion dollars, true or false? We all supported him. And when he started, he started by visiting countries, having economic management meetings and in all of these collaborative deliberations he had, they kept telling him, if you're going to grow a one trillion economy, the first thing you need to do is to remove subsidy. We're all part of this, we all know what was going on. We took out the, he was bold, he took out the petrol subsidy because they told him if you take out the subsidy, you'll block the hole in the budget and then you have more money to build roads, infrastructure and every other thing. Because to grow a one trillion dollar economy, you must have road. You must have working ports, working airports, working seaports, roads must be good, roads, hospitals, name it. And as a listening president and a very proactive president, he took out the subsidy because he's been advised that by taking out the subsidy, you'll have more money to build these things. Secondly, they said we don't have power. He went to power companies to come and invest in Nigeria and they told him, no, our tariff is not cost reflective. You have to take out the tariff in the electricity bill so that we can invest more. What happened next, he took out the tariff in electricity. Before then, they told him that, oh, you know this, your FX, there's too many FX, we exchange rates, that is not good for foreign investors if they come in, even for us. We don't know exactly how to price even the economy and we took out the FX subsidy. These are bold initiatives and bold reforms that the President took to be able to give us the country of our dreams. There is no way you're going to have an investor that will put in money when all these three things were still there bedevilling the nation. So I want us to put it in context and I'll take it from there. As your Minister for Industry, Trade and Investment, my primary objective is to go and bring in investments, whether it's local, domestic or foreign, it doesn't matter, to make sure that manufacturing sector grows and to establish stronger relationship between Nigeria and other countries. For you to do that, you must have the right macroeconomic environment. A lot of us here know these terms, terminologies I'm using because we are economists and we are business people. When we took out the subsidies, when the President took out the subsidies, it was with intention that we were going to build the country of our dreams and that we were going to establish a right macro environment for us to be able to grow the way it was planned. But unfortunately, it didn't go quite as planned. And we are seeing the inflation going on and we are seeing, and these shocks were expected, it's not as if they were not expected. But remember, this is just one year in office. It takes time to build, even if you're building a house, no matter how small the house, it must be the foundation. Those were the foundational job that the President, the economy had to go through before we began to build the blocks. So at the moment, when that happened, of course, we had money. As the other speakers have said, we've seen the construction of major infrastructure, the Lagos Calabar Road, the Sokoto Badagri Road and many other infrastructure projects that are ongoing, including the, of course, investments in power, investments in C N G, in gas, various investments going on and all of them have started. It's going to take a while before we begin to see the impact of these major reforms, major changes and the investments coming in. In my own ministry, we also went out to support the President. We've been able to actually get a lot of investors and we found out that despite the economic challenges that we are going through, a number of countries are still willing, are willing to come into invest in Nigeria. When they come to invest, they create jobs because they're bringing manufacturing expertise with them. Job creation is the primary objective of President Bola Ahmed Tinubu. He promised us fifty million jobs and we set out to create fifty million jobs. For you to establish any manufacturing hub, you need skills. Skills development is critical. We took an assessment, thought industry, and found out that there was a skills gap. Not because we didn't have human beings, but we had human beings but did not have the right skill set to even fit in the jobs that we, we mandated I T F, Industrial Training Fund, the D G is here. I'm going to just give a synopsis of what most of the agencies in the ministry are doing and then I will allow them to make a full presentation when they come on board. Today we have Supa, Supa means scale up artisans. A number of us went to school. We work in the offices, we are administrative staff and all of that. But then there are also a number of people who are technical, who prefer to work with their hands or those who didn't even have the opportunity to attend a tertiary institution. Those people who prefer to work as skills people are the ones who are now given the opportunity under Supa, Supa, scale up artisans. I can tell you that before I T F took off this program, if you are a laborer, a plumber, you don't have a certificate. You go to work, no certificate. Whether you're working in Nigeria or because you are not properly trained. We sit down here as youths, we know that a number of the construction workers still import people from our neighboring countries, Beni Republic, Togo, Tobemboa, to come and work as artisans, true or false? But with Supa, what we are doing in I T F is to train our Nigerian people and give them certificates. Train them so well that they can compete with any labor force in the world and give us the sort of finishing that we are looking for. Be you a mechanic, a plumber, a, I mean, an electrician, tailor, carpenter, whatever you are. When you finish training and the training is free, we are going to train twenty million of you. We already started the registration and the training have already begun. And for the first time, we are bringing back the city and give certificates so that when you finish training and you leave, you have a certificate to show that you have a trade test. Very important and very crucial. You don't have to work in an office if you don't want to work in an office. I will allow the D G of I T F to come and brief us more on what we are doing with artisans, making sure that there are jobs and when not just jobs, when you have a certificate as a plumber, you can charge as a plumber charges in the United States. You can earn more, there is dignity in your label. You don't have to work under one man as an apprentice. You go to a proper school to get trained and get certified. President Bola Ahmed Tinubu put that program in place for you. Twenty million in five years under I T F. Apart from that, we said okay, Nigerian youths, you like to travel. I listened to my brother, Komrade Dayo Israel. It is true, we don't like to jappa, but if we want to jappa, let's jappa with dignity. Everywhere we go, they tell us, oh, we have a lot of Nigerian youths who are illegal migrants, who are washing toilets and not doing the right kind of jobs. The President mandated us to find out a program and we launched the National Talent Export Program, N A T E P. The D G or the coordinator of N A T E P is also here, he's going to brief you a little more about that. What that program does is that whoever you are, if you want to go outside and work and you pass through this program, will give you the right documentation that will enable you to get the right kind of visa, get employed here before you are going out. The government will take responsibility for you because we know that you are illegal migrant. People have already signed M O U's and agreements with the countries that you're going to work in so that when you eventually migrate to go and work, you're working in a dignified way. You are there representing us as ambassadors of this rich country, not to mislead us or not to embarrass us. National Talent Export Program, we've been able to sign agreements with a number of countries and we started processing the first batch. We have agreements, the D G will also come and explain to you, agreements with Q W S, with U A. with UAE, with Jordan, and now with America. We were here when we signed also a BPO, the Business Process Outsourcing Program, with a company that came from the United States. I just came back from the United States yesterday, where we signed a major agreement to facilitate trade and investment between Nigeria and the United States. We will see more investment and more job creation opportunities are open with that. Prior to that, the partnership we signed with this American company came here to give us our youth, all of you, 50,000 jobs, we started processing it. It means that where you're, even in Nigeria, you don't want to japa, you can even still work for an American company here in Nigeria, or any other global company. We hear about India, India is the leader in outsourcing, why not Nigeria? After all, we have better accent, we speak better English, why can't Nigeria be? The youth are very vibrant, very educated, and you can handle any of those outsourced jobs. So we decided to bring the job here to Nigeria, if you don't want to japa, no problem, if you want to japa, we will make it easy for you. If you don't want to japa, sit, stay here, and let us do the jobs to you. And so we brought the jobs, 50,000 is the first one that came in, we have another 100,000 coming in. Here, we're establishing the business outsourcing units, where you can sit down here and work for an American company and get paid in dollars, it's never happened before, it's made possible by the President. There are so many more, if you also decide that you want to be an entrepreneur, we have Smeedan, we have ITF, you have POI, they are here training you to be an entrepreneur. So if you finish school, or even if you're still in school, but you know you have the entrepreneurial streak in you, Smeedan will train you, after training, you'll give you certificates and give you money. The DG, our representative of Smeedan, is also here to explain more in what we're doing with Smeedan, with the entrepreneurship development skill of Smeedan. Thank you. POI, currently, you know, and we've been saying it over and over, but we want to use the opportunity to explain again, when the President took out the subsidy, the first subsidy, he introduced a $200 billion Naira fund for businesses, 50,000 brands to small businesses, 1 million of them. A number of youths, actually, most of them are truly youths, so far, we've gone almost 700,000, are still going. We did that on the website, transparently, because we know that that, you people are digital youths. Greatest youths!
Great!
Can we please reduce the noise in the background? 50,000 brands, also being disbursed currently to youths. In addition to that, additional 1 million to be given out to small businesses, and the 1 billion to big manufacturers, so that they can create more jobs to hire you. Okay, my time is up, maybe you guys are getting tired. I'm going to round off by saying that we are attracting investments to ensure that we have
Oh, yeah, please!
And by the grace of God, the $1 trillion economy of the President, that objective shall be realized. It is on the hands of the back of the
Oh, yeah, please!
So let me stop here, it's a little noisy, and yes. Oh, thank you, Mr. Speaker, thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to appeal to all of you, especially the greatest Nigerian youths here present. This town hall meeting is for you, and it is pertinent and imperative that you pay attention to what is being said. Perhaps some of the things